Good evening, and welcome to the Planning Commission of the City of Moreno Valley. And I'll call this meeting to order on November fourteenth, November fourteenth, 2019 at 7:02 PM. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Bruggeris.
Yeah.
Commissioner Stevens.
Present.
Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Dejeanay.
Here.
Commissioner Korsak.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Baker.
Here.
Chairperson Sims.
Here. Please stand, face the flag, and Commissioner Stevens lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're now going to move the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the agenda submitted.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, we have a first and a second. Please cast your vote. Alright. We have a 7-0. Okay. So this is regarding public comments. Any person wishing to address the commission on any matter either under the public comment section of the agenda or scheduled items or public hearings must fill out a request to speak form available at the door. The completed form must be called, must be submitted to the secretary prior to the agenda item being called by the chairperson. And speaking to the commission, member of the public may be limited to three minutes per person, except for the applicant for entitlement. The commission may establish an overall time limit for commitment, comments on a particular agenda item. Members of the public must direct their questions to the chairperson of the commission and not to the members of the commission, the applicant, the staff, or the audience. The next item is public comments on any item not on the agenda, sir. Are there any speakers tonight?
No, sir.
Okay. Next item is approval of the consent calendar, and that would be... The only thing on that is the minutes from the October 24th, 2019 meeting.
Need a motion?
Need a motion.
I'll move to accept the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Please cast your vote.
Can you please clarify the second, or...
Okay, that motion passed 7-0. Okay, the next item on the agenda, agenda is a public hearing item, and that is item number one, which is a conditional use permit for cannaborium, a cannabis micro-business. Can we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. Chair Sims and members of the Planning Commission, I'm Julia Dakota, and I'm the project planner. And the item before you tonight has been continued from the October 24th, 2019 hearing, where we continued it because we didn't have the ALUC Airport Land Use Commission consistency letter, which we now have. And so we're bringing this item back to you. If you remember, we had already done the public hearing, but I'll go ahead and do a brief report, just so everybody knows what we're, we're talking about. The applicant is requesting the approval of a conditional use permit to allow a cannabis micro-business located at 24685 Alessandro Boulevard in the existing shopping center. It'll be approximately 26,678 square feet. And the project is in the community commercial zone, which the properties next to it are also zoned, community commercial with our five, residential five on the north and the south of the project. And this business has four operations in it. It will have cultivation, manufacturing, retail dispensary, and distribution. The cannabis cultivation will be all grown indoors, so there'll be nothing outdoors. It's all organic, pesticide and herbicide free. It's a hydrophobic cultivation system with a soil blend and does not charge any waste into the neighborhood or the irrigation system. The manufacturing will use non-volatile, non-combustible equipment. And the distribution, they can distribute products from this facility to other facilities, as well as their own retail establishment that they'll have here as well. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve Resolution 201936, and recommend, that was supposed to be changed, that the Planning Commission approve the resolution and certify that the product, project is categorically exempt, and approve the conditional use permit. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them for you, and the applicant is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the commissioners have any, we did go over this early in-depth, in-depth on the last, at the last meeting, but certainly it's, we have time for more questions of staff. Hearing none, do, with the applicant, does the applicant have anything that they would like to add? Are there any questions that the commissioners have of the applicant? Alright. Okay.
I noticed that there wasn't, I know we've approved quite a few of these, and a lot of them have what they call a man trap when they first go into the building. Is this one gonna have a man trap? Before you enter? It's almost, I believe, a room you go into from the entrance.
We, we have a condition of approval where we're still working with the applicant on the accessibility from the front, so we'll be working with them on the, the floor plan.
Any other questions? Okay, oh, go ahead, Robert.
So that will be one of the conditions of approval?
Well, it's not a state requirement that they have that, so we're going to be working with the applicant to make sure that it's secure and that it meets all of the objectives of the state law and our municipal code.
Mr. Chair, if I could clarify, it doesn't have to be a man trap, but we are requesting, we're requiring a controlled entry.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think we, at the last meeting, we don't want to get too much into the security and whatnot, that's proprietary for each and...
I know, but since we do live here and we are residents, I kinda want, you know, paramount safety for the residents. That's my concern.
Any other comments, questions that we need to ask of the applicant or staff? Okay, is there, do we have any public comments on this item?
No, sir.
Okay, well then at that, I would close, close the public hearing and move on to deliberations between commissioners. So we're deliberating now. Or a motion?
I'll go, I'll go first. Okay. The good thing about it, I had, I had a second chance to look at the staff report, because I do have my first one. So I was able to match and look to see if there's any difference, and, and I'm glad there wasn't. And I'm glad that I was able to really look at it well, to make sure, as our fellow commissioners want in our city of safety and care. So I thanked the staff for, for the report. I thanked for the, I thanked them for, you know, the federal laws, state laws, and our city regulations. And again, on page four, man, page 10, I looked at the safety security plan, and I found something interesting for me, to help me understand what the staff has put on the report and what the applicant is going to apply a bye-bye in the conditions. And it's on page five, number 11, paragraph, and it talks about the safety security plan, ensure safety for both customers and employees, okay? But it's the middle that really, I like hearing and reading. The video surveillance on the exterior of the building will recall all activities in the parking lot, in the surrounding, the, surrounding the, the dispensary. The condition of approval requires that the applicant to provide all videos to police and fire. That's very important, that we be able to solve crimes. I need that to be an insurance in our city, and I'm glad that the staff put that there. And then the other one is the order, the order, and then a few things in the condition that, that I was able to, to help with that, as we call it the man cave, but I'm glad that it's in here and is on number 61. And it, it, I'm sorry, did I put my, my notes that I just had, I just lost them, talking to the... But it's on page 61, I mean, on page 56, and number 51. And prior to approval, the plans, the applicant shall submit plans detailing provision for control and safety and secure assets in, into and out of the dispensary area. So I know that the staff is going to work with the applicant to make sure that there's a safety net, that where they could go in, and they show their ID, and they must be 21 and over, because that's the rules of the city. That's important, that, that's in those conditions. And the other one for me always is the fire department, where they have the lockbox. If there's an emergency at night and everything, they'd be able to go in and take care of the emergency. So I do like everything that the staff have put on paper for the applicant to be held
Any other comments by commissioners? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve Resolution number 2019-36.
Second.
Okay, we have a first by Commissioner Korsak, second by Commissioner Harris. It was approved 7-0. Good luck on your project. Do we have staff wrap up?
Planning Commission's action on this is an appealable action. Anybody who wishes to file an appeal must do so within 15 days of the action. An appeal must be in writing, submitted to the Community Development Director with the appropriate fee and the specific reasons for the appeal. If we receive an appeal, the item would be agendized for the city council's consideration.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to item number two, which is conditional use, use permit for the Good Life Retail Cannabis Dispensary. Can we have the staff report for this, please?
The staff report will be presented by Planner Jerry Garcia now.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Tonight I'll be presenting the staff report for conditional use permit number 19-0094. It's for a commercial cannabis use called the Good Life. There we go. The project is located in the ground floor portion of a two-story commercial office building on the north side of Sunnymeat Boulevard, and just a little bit east of Back Way. The site is addressed at 24384 Sunnymeat Boulevard. The site's located within the village-specific plan, SP 204, and more specifically, specifically within the Village Commercial and Retail District, which allows for cannabis distribution with a conditional use permit. Access to the site is provided by a driveway on Sunnymeat Boulevard. It accesses parking both in the front and rear of the building. A secondary emergency access is available to the alley at the rear. The site provides 38 parking spaces for the tenants within the building, including the dispensary. Parking study was done for this project and determined that 38 spaces was adequate to provide parking for the needs of all the tenants, both now and future tenants, within the building. The use will occupy a total of 2,145 square feet, including a dramatic lobby and retail space, and secured backroom space for storage and management of the site. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve Resolution 2019-41, and thereby certify that the CUP is categorically exempt under SEQA, and approve the conditional use permit, according to the conditions that are attached. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. I will point out that the resolution before you will be updated prior to signature if you approve it this evening. There was a few typos that were noticed, and they'll be corrected in the final version that you'll receive. And we have had one caller, Tom Gerally, site manager for the Sundance Center.
Thank you. It says time for commissioner questions. I, I did have one. I, I did look through the, I saw the, the traffic, parking study analysis. So mine's more of a process question, I, I understood the report. So it's more of a question is, 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 so there was a standard parking analysis utilizing the municipal code parking requirements, and then there's this alternate one based on, you know, putting eyes out in the parking lot counting cars and looking at peak times and all that stuff. So my only question is, is I, I don't have a problem with the recommendations from the traffic engineer coming up with 38 is good, but from a process standpoint, if we're, we're deviating from the, if, if I recall, 41 would have been a requirement for the, per the municipal code, isn't there, is there a requirement, or how do we move away from providing a variance from the municipal, is there, is there, or is it just done administratively? That's a question.
Yes, the, the way the code is written, it does allow for discretion with the benefit of a parking study, to provide documentation of adequate parking for the tenant use. So this isn't a situation where you need to approve a variance. The code already allows for consideration of, of a site-specific parking study, and allows the Planning Commission to approve projects based on the findings of that parking study, or obviously the, the specific number that's listed in the code. So the code has that built-in flexibility.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. And I think it's important, folks, that if they do watch this stuff here, that, you know, when there is, that, that there is adequate, there is, the leeway or the, the ability to make modifications with appropriate study or analysis, so. Any other questions? Commissioners of the, of staff?
I have one, Commissioner. I drove by there yesterday, and on the, on the building itself, it has security cameras. Now, does the applicant has to put their own surveillance? And also?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions, staff? Okay, thank you. Well, if the applicant would like to speak, now's the time.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Christopher Henry, and I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you for reviewing our project, looking at it. If there's any questions or concerns that come about throughout the process of us building out this facility and coming into operation, definitely engage us. We're your partner in the city, and we would like to engage you on all aspects of the project and the cannabis industry as a whole. Again, we appreciate your time tonight in allowing us to present this, and hopefully we can get an approval.
Okay, thank you. Is, do we have questions from the commissioners of the applicant? Commissioner Harris?
This, this kitchen, is it a commercial kitchen for edibles?
No.
This is just for, for staff?
Correct, just for break rooms, staff, lunch, things of that sort.
Thank you.
I didn't see a waiting area for the, for the customers.
Okay, so if you look at the plan upon the entry point, where the double doors are at the front, that is kind of our waiting area. So you would enter the facility through those double doors, and the two stations that you see around the round area would be your check-in area. That's all kind of a security area before you pass into the actual dispensing part of the facility. That is really our holding area. Our, our ideal plan of operation is to be able to get them in, check their IDs, check them into the facility, and get them behind closed doors into the secure area and out of the building as fast as possible. So you won't see too much seating or interactive area within that lobby area, just because of our, our protocols for safety reasons.
So they'll be bussed in after they get cleared?
Yes, once they're cleared, then they could be bussed into the backside of the facility to view and purchase as, as they would like.
Business.
Correct.
I mentioned the security cameras that they already have in the building.
Yes.
So you'll be supplying your own?
Yes, we will be supplying HD, above HD, they are ultra HD cameras, that will secure the facility inside and out. A total of 32-plus cameras will be installed in the building, which will integrate into your system via Hitachi Gateway System. So we'll, we'll meet, we'll meet your requirements, we'll exceed your requirements.
I want to keep the security part private.
Yes, yes.
Thank you for the amount, but I just want to know that you're gonna put your own, that's the main thing.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, sir. And the glass, the windows, are there gonna be any windows that, where people, because I saw some?
Okay, so there's no windows, but we have a net. So there's kind of a see-through netting area that is very secure. Think of this as if you're in a casino, right? And you go up to the cashier window, and you see the gates that kind of secure there, where the cash management is and whatnot. We don't want it to be too cumbersome, but very inviting. So what we've done is kind of a see-through netting, that's very secure, that you can see back and forth, you can see customer interaction, security guards are able to see the interaction of the clients as they come into the facility and exit the facility, but there's no glass in those, in those particular areas.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commission.
So at this time, we'll now take public comment. Do we have, I see Mr. Gerald is on the...
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chair Sims. Vice Chair Baker, commissioners, members of staff and the public, both here in the chambers and watching at home on MPTV or on the internet, internet. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm Tom Gerald, I'm the site manager for the Sundance Center. We're about 300 feet or so due southeast of the facility, and on where it says for opposed, I just put concerns. Philosophically, I'm not a user of the, the bud, if you will, but it's something the public spoke loudly on, it's been approved, the city, and then bluntly, I've talked to some of you, and I'm real, and from what I've heard and seen, the city's doing a really, really good job of making sure when these facilities come online, that they're well-regulated, well-policed internally, you know, self-policed, and so I affirm that, and I think it's a good thing. And, but my million-dollar question is, is simple, and I had some discussion. First, I want to thank Ashley, she was very courteous, as well as Mr., say his name right, Grossoino, did I'm saying it right?
Yes.
Okay, I got it. And they're both very courteous and very helpful in answering some of my questions late this afternoon. But given our closeness, we have in our center, first off, the overall area, I don't have to tell you, is very distressed. You know, the biggest calling card I can give you is that our rents are about half what they were in, when that center opened in 1987. In fact, Dave Slosson, he used to be a tenant there many years ago, so, you know, that, the tale of the tape says a lot. The homeless problem, I don't have to tell you about, it's just very prolific. We get rid of one regular, and I get three more new ones, you know, literally by the day. So there's a lot of problem behavior in the area. And my concern is simply this, what keeps people from making their purchase in a well-regulated facility such as this, and driving across the street, parking in our parking lot, and toking up? Now, if they were to stop, get a pizza and some beer and go home, great, well, they have to leave after, but it's that, should we say, secondary use that can be problematic. And I had some, my discussion earlier with Mr. Grossoino is that, I said perhaps in the language, I guess they hand out literature to people when they make their purchase, their signage, and indicating that it's just as illegal to imbibe off-site in a neighbor's property and so on and so forth, as it would be on-site. They have on-site security, we're not gonna have that direct benefit. So I don't want to make a bad situation worse. So I'm not here to fight the project, but I'm saying let's, I'm a big believer in the principle of highest and best use, so, you know, this is, it's said that people have spoken, they made their decision, cities authorize these facilities, but let's make the best implementation, let's not add to our burdens there, so that three years from now, I'm saying now my rents are 25 cents what they were in 1987. You know, that, that alone is very telling, and it's hard to maintain properties and, you know, keep the old tugboats afloat. So those are my comments, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
Do we have any, any other speakers?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I will close the public hearing. I guess I, if there, can we ask the applicant to come and address that, address Mr. Gerald's
Mr. Gerald, I appreciate your concerns. It's a concern of ours as well, and as we operated in other cities, it is a concern of the public in general. How we like to deal with that is through education of our customers. As they come in, part of our policies and procedures are to educate them that there's no consumption within our site or within public areas or right-ofways of the city. We stress to all of our customers that all consumption has to happen in a private authorized facility or home. So it's, it's, the way that we deal with it is through education. We want to work hand-in-hand with the community, so if there's a way that anybody feels that we can better address these issues, definitely bring it to our attention. We're gonna be putting together a community development program to implement policies and procedures throughout the community and engage the, the community as a whole to help us regulate within. So we, we welcome any questions or any recommendations from the public that can help us do our job better. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we've heard the staff report, heard public testimony, just time to deliberate on this, on this case. It's open for deliberations.
Okay, I'll go first again. Once again, I grateful for the staff to bring the, the case, and to look at all the things that bring safety first. that bring safety first and care second. Because you've got to have safety so you can have care. So I'm also glad to hear the applicant can come up and address Mr. Gerald's concerns. Very important to know that they're willing to educate their customers. Very important. I'm glad that I heard that tonight. Again, I like the building where it's going to be at. There's plenty of parking. I'm glad there's going to be security, armed. Also, I read that, and I wish that every center did have a guard, but again, that's private to each owner. But I'm glad that this center is going to have armed guards and regular security guards day and night during the operation business. And I hope it goes well for him and the community and the surrounding businesses. I hope they all work together to make sure that the customer goes home to their own private place so no one gets injured. That's important. Thank you.
You know, we've seen a pile of these come through dispensaries, micro-business cultivation. So I guess I have a question is, have any of these legal ones that we've actually have gone through the process, have we gotten any of them, anybody open and running for business yet?
Not yet. We do have some going through the building permit process right now who are probably fairly close, but we don't have anybody who's actually taken occupants or receiving an occupancy permit yet.
And we've given final approval to the state on probably a handful of them that have gotten their last approvals from our office, that they've finished the process with us. There's probably a handful that are right on the cusp.
Yeah, so I mean, some of this stuff, you know, it's, I mean, like what Mr. Gerald's mentioned, I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a big issue, the whole, you know, there's more to that than just this. But anyhow, you know, from a deliberating standpoint, the thing, this seems like a kind of a new business adventure for the city, getting into approving these things and whatnot, because, you know, it is a partnership, because there's revenue that will generate to the city, you know, someplace. So and the city has come up with strict regulations, and it seems, from what we've heard time and again with these reports, that they're fully well-thought-out. I think the proof is going to be in the pudding after we see some of these actually, you know, up and running and seeing kind of the, how they actually function in these different places. But the good thing is, is these are all conditional use permits. So if I understand the conditional use permit, I don't know what the process is, if these ever go sideways on us, but what the, if it's a revocation, or how does that work?
So if there were issues or concerns through code enforcement or planning or PD or whatever, they would bring them to planning staff. They would be, try to be addressed initially with the holder of the permit, but if they were severe enough or warranted a change of their conditions or a possible revocation of the permit, it would come back to this body for a hearing on that revocation.
So kind of, maybe this is off-track, but you can tell me to shut up.
Never tell you.
I will. But this from an educational standpoint, so if, not this particular applicant, but one of these, there's, I can't...
Seven.
Seven that already have the conditional use in there, and something goes bad, is it generally, is it administrative process through code enforcement that escalates into, or it could come from a criminal side on the, with the PD?
Could come from either source, depending on the nature of what that violation is. It could be building and fire issues, it could be operational issues, which would come through, could probably likely to be investigated by code enforcement, or it could be, as you said, criminal aspects that PD's encountered. Regardless of where that case might initiate, it would ultimately, if it became a revocation or a modification even of those conditions, would ultimately become a new public hearing here, to which this body would make the decision, and then the same appeal process would attach to whatever that decision was. But yes, it could be either revoked or modified, depending on the nature of the concern.
Thank you for the clarification, I appreciate it.
My question is that, I know that we have the code enforcement, law enforcement that regulates the dispensaries and micro businesses. And I don't know if you could field this question, but is there a national, federal, county, state type of database system that regulates the individual card owner in the event that they commit infractions, that it could be revoked or suspended or anything like that?
Nothing national, because it's still prohibited and illegal under federal law. So the feds aren't touching this. But their state license is also regulated, and the State Bureau of Cannabis Control has their own investigators, and they are watching these places and working with the local jurisdictions. We've worked with some of the investigators as well, with some of the illegal ones. They'll be working with us to monitor the new legal ones too. And if there are concerns in addition to the CUP revocation, and in addition to the operating permit that's a prerequisite to this CUP, which can be revoked as well by the city, the state investigators can start an action to revoke their state license. And if they lose any one of those three, the state license, the city operating permit, or their CUP, they lose any one of those three things, they're out of business.
I was thinking more of the individual.
The licenses are all attached to an individual.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not, they can't be held by corporations or LLCs or invisible stakeholders. There is a, there is a, one in certain individual who is the applicant on each of these applications and licenses.
No, I'm not talking about the applicant. I'm talking more in addressing Tom's question.
Oh, a customer?
Purchases, you're a customer.
Oh.
They run into, or they abuse it, go out smoking or whatever, where they're not supposed to, they get caught or whatever, can they lose that ability to use that card to purchase?
I don't believe there's anything in the regulations at this point that monitors an individual purchaser's ability to purchase.
They have to have a card, or, or is it, because it's now, you could just go in and purchase, right? Without having a, without having a card.
With ID, but, but yeah, you don't have to have a separate permit to purchase.
I believe what Alvin's talking about is the medical card that everybody got so they could just go out there and purchase, even illegally, just it's a medical marijuana card.
That's going to be irrelevant in this context.
Yeah, I know. But that's what, that's what he was, he was speaking about, if they could get that revoked. I don't even think those cards were really that big of a deal myself. But I do know that what you're talking about, because I was told today by a resident how true it was, I don't know, but in Harupa Valley, they did allow cannabis sales legally. And some of those have been shut down, because I guess they were not doing what they were supposed to do. So I know that can happen. I'm hoping, the flip side is that there is a homeless issue, and I know Tom spoke of it, because, you know, we've got a lot of homeless people. And hopefully, a lot of these businesses, we can get enough revenue so we can address a lot of those issues. And maybe, you know, I mean, just in the future. We're testing the waters, we'll see how it goes, and hopefully, everybody does what they're supposed to do. And even some of the people that are purchasing, can they like, just be driving around smoking pot?
I know driving under the influence of marijuana is the same as driving under the influence of alcohol.
Oh, is it? I don't know. See, I'm just asking a question. I didn't know if they, because they can purchase it and light up, like if they're lighting up a cigarette. I mean, can they get pulled over? They can still get pulled over. So it's like drinking a beer in the car then? Okay, so it's a little different. I don't know. I don't... Okay, so they will enforce that, the police department?
I'm sure they'll continue to enforce driving under the influence, yes.
Okay, because I don't know. Sometimes I'm driving down the street and the car next to me reeks, so. Okay, well, enough of that. I think we've kind of covered everything. I think, you know...
I think Commissioner Harris has something.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it is completely against the law to smoke or to consume cannabis in public, anywhere in California. So you have to, you know, I, so anyway, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, any other Commissioner comments or deliberations? Phil?
The applicant said it correctly. Education is what's going to prevent things happening in the City of Moreno Valley. Education, and every dispensary is bound to that, to educate their customers.
Okay, do we have a motion for this item?
I move that we approve Resolution Number 2019-41.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a first and a second. Please cast your vote. It was approved 7-0. Congratulations, good luck on your project. Do we have a staff wrap-up?
Yes, this action is also an appealable action. Any appeal that would be filed would need to be filed within 15 days, directed to the Community Development Director in writing with the appropriate fees. And if an appeal is received, it would be agendized for City Council consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we'll go on now to item number three, which is a, not a cannabis. We've got to do a planned unit development, the conditional use permit for a planned unit development. Can we have the staff report, please?
Julia, oh, sorry, Julia Disco will present the staff report.
Good evening. The applicant before us tonight is requesting an approval of a 20-unit, multi-unit residential development called the Fur Garden Town Homes. The location is on Fur Avenue, just west of Paris Boulevard. There are three parcels that have been merged into one lot now. They are across from the Sunnyme Park. The zoning there is within the specific Plan 204. It's village residential, which allows this use. The project, as designed and conditioned, is consistent with the goals, policies, and objectives of the general plan, as well as the village plan and the city's municipal code for planned unit developments. The project is accessed from Fur, and it has a driveway that goes around the development, which allows for access for fire as well as large vehicles. All of the units will have a two-car garage, and they are two-story units, four bedrooms. Each one will have their own private open space. Along with that, there are several open space areas for the residents in that development to use. One area is a picnic area with picnic tables and barbecues. There'll be landscaping throughout the development, as well as walking areas. It's a contemporary design with two roof lines, two different types of buildings. The, most of the buildings will be duplexes, however, there'll be one freestanding building. And then the existing house that's on the site will be modified and updated to be consistent with this development. These are the color combinations they've chose. They have some entry front doors that will really kind of pop the front of the buildings. And it's, to date, I have not had any phone calls regarding the project. The project is categorically exempt as an infill project, and staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve Resolution 2019-35 and certify that the project is exempt from CEQA and approve the planned unit development conditional use permit. Before I wrap up, I'd like to go back a little bit to the proposed project being a conditional use permit for a planned unit development. The specific Plan 204 allows for a variety of development in that area to try to encourage different types of development. And so with that, we're able to use different requirements within the municipal code and the specific plan to modify and to help facilitate development. So that's what we've done in this situation. So we're, it's a planned unit development with a conditional use permit. Thank you, and myself and the applicant are here to answer any questions for you.
Thank you. Do we have any Commissioner questions to staff at this point? Commissioner Harris?
I was wondering, is it known at this point whether this project will have an HOA, or will it have a special district for creating landscape around the project and maintaining it?
It's a multi-unit development like an apartment complex with one owner, so the units are not individual for sale.
Oh, I see, okay.
So they'll have to maintain the site like an apartment complex would. They're just a different type of development.
So it will be a special district then?
It's not really a special district, it's just owned by one person who has to maintain it.
Okay, special district would be if the city made it.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And so I assume that the fire departments looked at this layout, and there's adequate turnaround and...
Yes.
And just as a question, the green, I'm looking at the, well, that's even a better picture of the landscape plan, so the little landscaped areas between the duplexes, these are open to everybody within the complex?
That's correct. The private open space is to the rear of all of the units. So they have, in excess of our code, and the specific plan requires 150 square feet, but all of these units have more than that. The least amount is 231 square feet, and it goes all the way up to about 900 square feet. So they've done a really good job of trying to make sure that each unit has as much of private space as they can, but still, open space is required by the code as well, and we've made sure that's in there as well.
Is there going to be block, is it a, the perimeter fencing, is it block or what?
Yes, it's block wall perimeter around all three sides.
And is the front gate gated, or is that going to be, so like it's a private?
Right now, they don't have a gate. They do have certain requirements that they would have to meet with transportation if they wanted to put a gate.
Thank you. Any other questions, staff? Okay, we'll move on to the applicant, if they'd like to present.
Evening. My name is John Ajad, I'm the project designer. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of the applicant? Easy for you tonight, I guess.
I overheard her say that they will not be for sale.
That's correct.
So these are all rental units?
That's right.
For about how much?
For about, I'm sorry?
As much as we can get. Just kidding.
So I assume there's going to be a master, like a master water meter, and you'll work out the water and stuff like that?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, all right.
Are they going to have a manager on site?
Yes, there will be one manager. Actually, the existing house is going to be the manager's residence. You're going to remodel that and make it look like new, like the rest of the buildings.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any public speakers?
We have one, Tom Gerald.
All right. Mr. Gerald? Gerald?
Tom Gerald, again, speaking, someone on behalf of the Sundance Center. I spent a bit of time, and myself, as a long-term resident, I've been in Moreno Valley since 1981. I spent a bit of time, and myself, as a long-term resident of Moreno Valley since nineteen eighty-one completely. But I started looking at the community very intently from seventy-nine on. So I saw it right from its early inception. I've seen a lot happen, both good and bad. I, I do, one quick question. These units, these buildings, are they gonna, at some point, become for sale individually? We got individual property owners? Because if that's the case, that's a real tricky situation there. That's a tough one. So that's something I think you should maybe ask the applicant of. You know, whether they'd be available to buy these mult bone, you just look at some of the areas in Edgemont, and that's what you got, and it makes it tough to police it. But the thing I wanted to, primary reason I put a speaker slip in, I wanted to commend, I'm saying that the applicant, the developer, and also the staff, did some very, very smart here, consolidation of parcels. The biggest reason Central Sunnymeat and Edgemont are the problems they are, and it's the most polite thing I can say, is the configuration of these long, narrow, skinny lots. And as he, Commissioner, Chair Sims, nodding, he knows, you know, they're very, very hard to do anything intelligible that makes sense, has much aesthetics to it. They actually become, you know, almost doomed from inception. So this was a really, really smart move. And I will always say, this is why we need redevelopment. When municipalities lost redevelopment so many years ago, because that's the tool you need to can provide the financial tools to be able to do this with. I mean, it's a side issue, but something to be aware of. And, but that idea of the consolidation of parcels is to be commended and encouraged. So, and I think perhaps with incentives to, you know, legitimate developers, when bringing projects, boy, you'll get a better community. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see anybody else on the public speakers. Do we have any more?
No, sir.
Okay, with that, then I'll close the public hearing portion of the, of the hearing and open it up to, to Commissioner comments. I, it would be my addressing Mr. Jarrell's?
There might, there may be a rebuttal of the applicant, I don't know.
Oh, okay, yeah, thank you. Would the applicant care to address Mr. Jarrell's question about ownership, I guess?
Hi, my name is Deepak Mayeshwari. I'm the owner and developer of the project. To address Mr. Jarrell's comments, first of all, thank you for the kind words on the project and the design. My project designers worked very hard on that. Secondly, we have no intention of creating the HOA of any type or selling them on individual basis. For, I think for the community and for us, it would just make more sense to manage it ourselves and rent them out. So I, I don't, I don't see any conflict of interest there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, if I just might add to that, even if his intentions were to sell, they wouldn't be able to legally do so. There, they would need to come in with an entirely new parcel map. It would all be, have to be separately parceled out and approved by the city land development, this commission. They'd have to create an HOA. So there's a number of things that would have to happen, should they ever want to sell.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I, I'll, I'll start off on this one. I, I think it's a great project. The, it's, it looks like it, it is very well thought out. And, you know, this is packing a lot of stuff in a small, small area, but it, it looks like it's done well. And I, I, you know, and I, I tend to agree with Mr. Jarrell's comment about these skinny little, skinny long lots. They, that's probably legacy planning that done from the county. And you get what you get when you got it. And so now we got it. So it, I do, this is the kind of stuff within the specific plans and things like that, that it's good to see developers and staff working together to try to massage and, and use the municipal code to come up with, you know, viable projects. Because this, this kind of stuff revitalizes, you know, it could be a seed to start, you know, you know, one guy see it and one developers do it and others see it. And, you know, you might see some renovation in that area. So, you know, I, I like it, and I'm gonna, I, I believe I'm probably gonna be in favor of it. Others have any comments? Deliberations?
I do, sir. I want to thank the staff for the report, but I also want to thank the fire marshal and the fire department for getting involved, because they have twenty-four conditions that the applicant must abide by. And when I see projects like this, like apartments or development, I always think about safety. Because they need to get in, take care of the problem, whether it's the ambulance or the fire department, the trash company, whatever, or the delivery trucks. I look at safety, and I'm glad there's twenty-four conditions for the fire department to hold the applicant accountable. I also am glad that the applicant stated himself that he's not selling the property at all. They're rentals, and they're going to be living on the property so they can manage them themselves. So that's a good thing. I'm also glad that they're using the materials that are on the back of the pages that with the linestones and the, and the roofing. So this project, this, these apartments are gonna make a big difference on this lot, especially across the street from the softball field. So Fur is getting a makeover, and that's a good thing. It's close to everything, it's close to State of Brothers, Catalinas, this, the freeway. It's a good location, and I hope that other applicants that are, or other property owners that have small lots, as they call them small, they can be vital to many people in the city of Moreno Valley when you build apartments. There are great designers out there that can put anything in a small hole. So don't be afraid to do those things. And I'm glad that the applicant stepped out, and I hope that, like Commissioner Sims mentioned, that others will follow.
Hey, I, you know, Commissioner Brug, Bruggeras, I, I, this is the second, I think, project on Fur Street, if I recall. I, I, is it Fur, or there was one of the other streets, and right, right close to this, where we approved a senior apartment complex, if, if I recall, just two, three months ago. So maybe the seeds have been planted, so. Keep our fingers crossed. Any other deliberations or looking for a motion? Motion would be good.
I'll make a motion. I recommend that we approve resolution number two oh one nine dash thirty-five.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a first and a second. Can we cast our votes? Hey, it's approved seven zero. Good luck on your project. Do we have staff report? Or what wrap-up?
Wrap-up. The Planning Commission's action tonight is appealable. Any appeal would need to be filed within fifteen days, directed to the Community Development Director in writing with the appropriate fee. An appeal would be addendized before the planning excuse me the City Council for consideration.
Thank you. Okay, we're cooking along here. We're on to item four, which is a plot plan for a multifamily residential unit development, excuse me. Can we have a staff report, please?
This item will be presented by Gabriel Diaz.
Alright. Thank you Chairman and Commissioners. The project, the project is located on Edgemont Street, south of Eucalyptus Avenue and north of Dracia. The project zone is residential ten, multifamily R-ten. I did read in the staff report, this gets edited throughout by various people. And I read it somewhere that it said that the general plan was R-15, and the general plan designation is R-O, which is residential office. I just wanted to clarify that. The applicant is requesting approval for a plot plan for the development of an eighteen-unit multifamily residential complex on one point eight six net acres and point two six acres of storm drain and sewer easements on the adjacent two properties to the east, I mean, to the west. And that's what we see on this surrounding map. On the site plan, the proposed project proposes four unit, four four-unit buildings and one two-unit building, all one-story. All eighteen units consist of two bedrooms, two baths, washer and dryer, and a total living area of one thousand thirty-five square feet. The project does provide common open space that includes picnic tables and barbecue areas. Each unit includes a hundred and fifty-four square feet of private open space. The minimum private open space is a hundred and fifty. There is no community buildings or manager's office on site. I know you were asking those type of questions before for the previous project. Parking for the development will include a combination of attached two-car garages for each unit and six surface parking spaces for guests, meeting the minimum requirement per, our municipal code. Access to the project is from one driveway off access from Edgemont Street. Internal circulation is within a twenty-four-foot wide driveway aisle, and there is a turnaround at the end of the project for the fire department and for the trash trucks. The design of the buildings include a variety of colors and architectural features to break up the massing and provide visual interest. These, these, these details include painted wood fascia, foam window seals, covered private entrances, exterior columns and trellises. Variation amount, among the buildings is also included between the mixture of two and four unit buildings. On the two buildings fronting on Edgemont, the applicant has, has worked with, with us to try to make them fit the single-family homes directly across the street, so they're kind of more narrow. You can, this is the four unit, the two unit. But on the ends, you can see they're, they kind of have that old-school, smaller home, which is across the street. Planning, environmentally, planning staff has reviewed and determined that this project is, qualifies as a class thirty-two clerical, categorical exemption, infill project section one five three three two under the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act. Public notice was sent to all property owners posted on the site, published in the press enter, press enterprise newspaper. I did receive one call from an adjacent neighbor, and they weren't really too concerned. They didn't have a say as far as pro or against the project, but just kind of, were kind of, had questions about the development. This is a material sample board. And staff recommendation, staff recommends that the planning commission take the recommended actions as proposed by staff. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Do we have questions of staff? Well, I, I have a couple. Is the perimeter fencing gonna, what's the perimeter fencing gonna be?
It's pilasters with wrought iron.
And then the, this not apart, this parcel that's not apart, is there an existing home in there already? Or how's that gonna work?
No, I believe it's vacant.
It's just vacant property?
We did, it, it is included in your staff report. Staff did try to have, or did have a meeting with the adjacent landowner and the current property owner for this project, and we tried to have them work together. So like the previous project before, you combine them, you have a better project, you don't have leftover pieces, better planning. Unfortunately, that, we were unable to make that happen.
Those are the fencing that's gonna be, this little slot that, what's the width of that? That's a, this fifty-foot lot?
Pretty narrow, yes.
So is that, is gonna be fenced off with a?
Wrought iron.
And how's the grading gonna work? I, I didn't see a grading plan, but is, is that gonna work where?
I think the edges, yeah, it goes downhill. Edgemont is probably the high point, and then it goes downhill. So as far as neighbor to neighbor, the, everything around the project, they've done a good job of, I think on the southern end is where you have the biggest difference, which is two-foot difference.
So, well, I guess my question is, is, so there's gonna, is the toe of the slopes that are between built, you know, like behind building two, is there just gonna be a slope going, you know? Well, maybe that's a question for the applicant when they get up. But anyhow, it just seems like you're gonna have buildings and down to this property. But I guess you have to do what you have to do, or build a retaining wall, I suppose. Anyhow, that's my questions.
Is this area where the, is the water, I thought?
Yes, this is within the Box Springs Water Company. And it passed the fire flow, there was sufficient fire flow. I, I believe the applicant did one earlier, where they submitted the project, and they did another one more recently. Fire, fire approved the project.
They approved, okay. Well, we got an approval.
It meets the minimum requirements.
Okay, that was my question, because I've lived here for thirty-five years, and I know exactly what's going on over there. So it's kind of like, I was wondering how they could, I don't know, well?
Well, there's a, to the north, north, east, east, there's a new development. And I, I believe as new developer comes in, new funds and, and new infrastructure is being put in randomly through there. I don't know exactly where, but I do see digging when I drive through some of those streets.
Okay, I was just, I was just wondering.
Is there, are the buildings all gonna be sprinkled?
I, I would assume so. That's a fire department or building question.
Any other questions, staff? Alright, it's time to hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Chairman Sims, planning commissioners. My name is Joseph Halasic. I represent NOAA Group Architects. I'm one of the principals there. And I, you've brought up several points, but I'll try to touch on them all briefly and, and make myself available for, for further questions if you'd like. We've been working in Moreno Valley and have believed in it for many years. We started with Day Center, which is just up the road, off the sixty. And I'm really heartened to see that development has worked its way all the way down to this project site. And more recently, we finished the Stone Ridge Town Center, which we're extremely proud of to this day. This started out as a simple residential project. It actually turned into a fairly long-term, complex residential project. As Gabriel mentioned, the first thing that we were requested to do when we had our initial pre-app planning meeting was to negotiate with the landowner of this little sliver parcel that juts into the property. We spent several months trying to negotiate a deal. It just, it just wasn't doable. We felt also that it would have improved the property, and we would have loved to see it happen. It just, it just didn't. We spent a lot of time working with Box Springs Water, who fortunately had recently, during the course of the project, extended a twelve-inch water main past our project. It was part of the project that was done up the road, the larger apartment project that was done up the road. We have great water pressure and great flow duration. We were happy to see that. Following that, we discovered that we have some issues because of the topography of the site with the sewer connection. The site falls away, and the sewer is not that deep in Edgemont. So we had quite a few issues to overcome with that. And we also had hydrology issues. We had very low percolation rates and the, one of the- We had very low percolation rates, and the, one of the neighbors to the south of us had built a CMU retaining wall that basically blocked our water flow. As a consequence of some of these problems, we actually, my client actually and I found the property owner for the adjacent parcel to the east on which we have the easements, and we negotiated a purchase of that property. That solved significant issues with our sewer, because it has a sewer line through it, and with our storm drainage, because we can divert our storm drainage through that property. And it also is enabling us to do a much larger development. We're currently in initial planning stages for a fifty-one unit development on that property. And when it's complete, it will act as one larger, we think, very nice development. I think that we have been successful to solve all of the issues, and we have our engineers, Winchester Associates here for any technical questions regarding the grading. I believe one of the commissioners asked about how the slopes are handled. We have two-to-one very minor graded slope banks that transition lot to lot and building to building. We followed the topography of the land, of the land. We did not want to have a large import or export situation. We in all, for all intents and purposes, have a balanced site right now. The wrought iron and stone fencing works well with the topography of the site, because obviously, if you have these pilasters, you can step your fencing down and up quite easily, much better than you can do it with a solid wood fence or some sort of other fence like that. It lends itself much better to it. We wanted to be one-story, because we feel that that works better for the market. There's, you know, a lot of development going on around there, and we also feel it's in better character with the neighborhood, so I make myself available for questions, and my engineer again is here if you'd like any further questions of them. Thank you so much.
I I have a question on the the common open space that's kind of on the south side of the project. I guess that's the south, yeah. On the other side of the not apart, is that, it shows a driveway approach, so is that a secondary access or emergency access? Where the, looks like there's a common open space here? Yeah, from Edgemont going on to the property.
Right, so we initially had thought, just when we first looked at the property, that that would become a a looped road. Unfortunately, that didn't work with the city's coverage requirements and open space and landscape requirements, so we turned it into kind of a park-like finger, if you will. We envisioned that that's a great place where tenants may be able to walk their dogs or let them run freely and play while they're there supervising, and we're, we are creating some nice decomposed granite paths with some nice landscaping and seating areas and so forth. So that is definitely an amenity to the project. It's not a fire lane or an access lane, but we have actually two fire department compliant hammerhead turnarounds on the property. It was a challenging site.
Yeah. The, did you, when you did your, you know, building pad layouts and so forth, if at some point in the future, the neighbor that owns the parcel that's not apart, is there a way? Did, will your footprints fit somehow in, you know, fit on there where you could, you know, continue this project if he came in and did a modification to this or do another plot plan?
Yes, certainly.
And so consolidate the lot lines or something like?
Yes, absolutely. It is a consideration, yes.
Okay.
And we were very hopeful that we would be able to acquire that property, because we do feel it made it better. But we also feel that we have a successful project with that, with that sliver land in the, in the middle of it, as it were.
Well, never is a long time, so you never know.
We never know.
It's, just keep talking. Maybe they'll come around. Any other questions, applicant?
I just wanted to make it clear, that little sliver there, if the owner of that were to change his mind in the future, would that actually still be, after all this is built out, will it still be something that you would be interested in? Or is it like, once it's built out, is it, oh, you know, you can't do it? You can't do anything with that little sliver?
No, we certainly could, and my client is present as well, and he just nodded his head, yes, he would be interested in that sliver.
Okay.
And and the site plan does lend itself to it. We have a
driveway that goes to here.
Yeah. And all the utilities or sides, whatever, eight-inch pipes or whatever you're doing, going offsite to connect the utilities?
Yes.
They'd be adequate.
Yes, sir. Sewer, water and storm. And we're actually, we've actually completed at risk most of the construction documents, and we're going to be submitting final engineering plans as early as next week, and we hope to be proceeding with our second phase of the adjacent property to the west in short order. We're very excited about this development and the, and the adjacent development.
Any other questions of applicant?
I have a question, sir.
Yep.
Mr. Diaz mentioned that there's not going to be a management building or or office. So is there going to be a crew to maintain the property, to clean it?
Yes, absolutely. All of the, all of the landscape maintenance and utility maintenance will be hired, and then when we do do the adjacent development, it has a fairly centrally located management office, which will have a permanent resident manager. This is a little bit too small to have that, although there may be some shared rent and management responsibilities with one of the tenants. That's always a possibility for kind of a mid-sized project like this.
That's great. I'm just considering the safety of the, of the residents that live there.
Yes, sir.
Sometimes you need an overseer?
Yes, sir.
To make decisions?
Yes, sir.
You know what I'm saying?
I I agree with that completely.
Thank you.
Any other questions, applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, do we have any speakers from the public?
Yes, sir, we have two.
I I can't see who we?
Tom Gerald and Brenda Addy.
Mr. Gerald.
Tom Gerald, again, speaking on behalf of myself, a long-term resident of the city, a little bit in our commercial interest here. I support the project. You know, it's another case of making the best of a tough situation with lot configurations. I spoke in the last project there, and you can see, you know, the issues there, what headache it is. And and again, beat the drum on redevelopment, that provides, you know, perhaps financial incentives that might have popped that deal, so you could have done that consolidation there. It's a great tool, and, you know, we really need it. It's a finance tool, but it's, it integrates so well with your planning, and allows you to do better projects, so I feel I have your own knowledge, but I do support the project. It was a good good design for what they have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Addy?
Hi, my name's Brenda Addy. I've lived in this general area since nineteen seventy-five. I live off of Dresia, and I think that's probably going to be part of their future projects. I'm in favor of the project. I think it's great, because any development in Edgemont that's getting it on Moreno Valley slash, I hate calling it Edgemont, because we are a part of it, Moreno Valley, is a great thing. And, but I'm concerned about two things, and that's the homeless. We have a ton of homeless, and dumping, illegal trash dumping, well, actually, three things, and offsite parking. Edgemont Street is getting ridiculous to go down. When they built the apartments at Eucalyptus and Edgemont Street, there's, I guess, there's probably, they figured out the parking according to the city plans, but there's still tons of people parking on Edgemont Street. And in the morning, when you have to take a child to school, you're, you're circulating around cars, kids, strollers, shopping carts. And that's just my biggest concern, because with that little empty lot, I know he said that they're going to have offsite, and that's not his property to keep control of, but I can see that becoming a problem, because the homeless had already been living on this particular piece of property, and then they got them out, but they also live in vehicles along Edgemont Street. And, and I don't know what's going on with this other skinny lot on the other side of the project, but there is a lot of these little sites, and there's people that think they could hold on to them and going to get major big bucks down the road for them, because they see a little bit of development going on, and they want to see what they can, all the money they can get. But my biggest concern is, is mainly parking, because danger in there for kids coming and going to school, because there is no sidewalk until you get up to those apart, new apartments.
Thank you very much. Any other, it doesn't appear there's any other speakers?
No, sir, no more speakers.
Okay, so I will close the public hearing portion of the, of the item. Is there, would the applicant like to respond to any of the comments?
Thank you. We share her concerns. The parcel, the little sliver parcel, did have a homeless person living on it, and we immediately, as soon as we found out about it, had the property fenced. I hope there will be a fence across the front of that little sliver parcel. There will certainly be a fence around three sides of it. I think that homelessness decreases when quality development goes in, and that's certainly going to be the case, is is the new apartment down up the street from us and we, and then the future developments occur. We have curb and gutter and sidewalk in front of this development, so, you know, there won't be the dirt lot where you can just pull off and park anywhere you want anymore, and this will be well-lit, and it will have fairly constant supervision among the neighbors, or the the tenants, rather, and the people who manage it. So we don't intend to let the property, to let the property degrade. We intend to keep it, keep it in good, good order. That's in everyone's best interest.
Okay, thank you very much.
But I do agree with this lady. Thanks.
Okay, well, I think we're at that point of the evening where we get to deliberate, where we can begin deliberating.
I think it's a good project for the area. Like they said, it's been a very depressed area for a long time, and maybe by getting new projects in there. I know the apartments went in, and I really feel for her because of the fact that I do see a lot of cars there. I go down there myself, because I take my mom to a medical clinic that's close to there, and then I kind of jog through there, and I know that there is an issue. And then there is an issue with the homeless all through the city. And with new development coming in to this area, my, my concern was actually the infrastructure, but they seem to, you know, like, just keep adding new and new and new, and before you know it, it'll, you know, just branch off, so that's a good thing. I'm inclined to approve the project. I just hope that some of the other issues can be addressed and taken care of.
Okay, I really like the design of it. I think a lot of thought went into making this fit into the neighborhood. I like the one-story design. I like everything about it. I think it would be an asset to that area to help bring more of this development through, so kudos, it could have been made more simple, probably, and maybe not as attractive looking, but I do like the planning that went into this. So I am going to vote for approval.
I, I, I like it myself as well, and I, I, some of the, I tend to agree that with development, that there's, still seems like there's quite a bit of vacant property in the Box Springs area, so hopefully, as time moves forward, I, I, you know, there's multiple issues. I think that's a legacy area of, a legacy planning issues from the past, and, you know, the Moreno Valley was county for a long time, so it, it's going to take time to, to turn it over in, in some of these areas like this. I think that's working against Box Springs and also the, the water, the mutual water company out there. That, that's a tough, a tough situation, and from my past experience, that, that is a big problem. But I think with development, and if, if, hopefully, the Box Springs Mutual has their capacity fees or connection fees appropriately with some master planning, that they can start, you know, doing the work and improving that area, so, because I, I think if there was water, that's a great location, it's just a matter of getting, getting the facilities built. But I think for, for what you have there with, you know, not being able to get that little sliver property, I think it was a, it's a well-thought-out project, so I echo what other commissioners are saying. Any else? Rafael?
Yes, sir. I want to thank the applicant for picking that spot to build the units, because the, just the material alone would enhance the neighborhood. The one-story look would blend in with the rest of the houses and everything around there, so that's a good thing. The other good thing is, is going to be lit. When there's a lot of light, you'll have less people parking in the street, and that's what we want. We want to make the raw land dirt into sidewalks, and when you put sidewalks, you put streetlights, and that makes it difficult for someone to park, you know, and it also makes it easier for law enforcement to spot them. And that's, you know, that's the only way that you're going to get things done. You know, I know that, I know we have a homeless problem, and I know people live in cars, but some places, they get out of hand, and people throw trash all over the place, and they think it's theirs, and they don't care about nobody else but themselves. And the only way that we're going to solve a problem is development, to bring in things so we can make the raw land into concrete and put lighting, as they are doing. I like the project. It's going to enhance the neighborhood.
Any other comments? Commissioner Harris?
I was just thinking that, I, I thought I saw somewhere, and I don't know, I couldn't find it, but that this was going to be named Edgemont something? No, no, that, like Edgemont Gardens or something? No, maybe I'm wrong.
Marvin Garden, yeah.
I, I think the developers here, and he could provide a name if they're, if they're proposing one, but I'm not aware there is one.
I just hope that we could, you know, kind of rebrand that area and not remind people that it was Edgemont.
It's a suburb of Moreno Valley.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a community of Moreno Valley.
Can I make one general comment here?
Mr. Chair, may I speak for a second?
Sure.
My client, Mr. Patel, just said, if you guys have any suggestions, we're open to the idea of naming. He had not thought of a name for it.
Okay.
Yet, as of yet.
I don't know.
But we're open.
Yeah. Commissioner Baker?
You know, I just want to make a general comment here. I like this development, and the thing I liked tonight, we filled in two infill projects, which these lots have been vacant a number of years, and then also on these cannabis deals, we're filling up a lot of buildings that have been vacant here probably ten, fifteen years, which I think is going to end up being a good thing overall, so I think we're pushing this, from a development standpoint, the right direction, and I like it, and I'll vote for this project.
Well, do you have a motion in your back pocket for this?
Oh, we could, let me find. Yeah, I will.
Well, I, I had one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. You just hold on there.
And, and I was listening to her comments, and I'm, I'm looking, and, and, great, yes, we are building, we're growing, and it's a great thing. I happened to live in that area when I was much younger, way back in seventy-one. But I was thinking about that, as we're growing and as we're But I was thinking about that, um, as we're growing and as we're putting in new buildings and new apartment buildings and, and we're, we're making these areas more and more denser, I, I wonder what the city plan in response to, I don't know how they, uh, decide parking, no parking, that sort of thing. Is it a density rating? It's at a amount of, uh, houses that go in a certain area or people that live in a certain area to address the growth that we're starting to, to have in Moreno Valley, to, to, to respond to the, the parking needs or, or to overcrowd a street? Or to, uh, is there some type of formula that goes into it to say, hey, wait a second, we're putting too many people on the street here?
Our zoning code does have formulas for parking, for counting required parking. So, it's generally based on, uh, number of bedrooms. There's parking for single-family homes versus multifamily. So, our planners, when they're reviewing the projects, do look to the zoning ordinance to determine how much parking is required. Um, there are some exceptions, but they're minor and they don't apply in too many cases. So, um, yeah, we have formulas that we use.
Okay, so in response, or eventually ought to get to the point where they say, hey, we're just putting too many cars out on the street here as far as parking is concerned on Edgemont or something like that?
I think we have a Parking Traffic and Streets Commission.
Right.
I think they can paint red stripes or red, uh, red paint.
Red curb or something there.
If I recall, I think I was on that commission for several years.
We do have public work staff here.
So, the Traffic Safety Commission, yes, you were on that board and you did a fine job. So, thank you. So, parking is on, these type of streets is typically, um, first come, first served. So, if there's room to park in between driveways, but we, we typically wouldn't restrict parking on residential street when you have front-loaded houses. It's a big community issue because there's oftentimes not enough, um, spaces on the lot. I mean, although they're, they're, the zoning is there, people have more cars than was intended for the zone. So, they're often parking in the street, but when there's curb and gutter, then the street sweepers come by, you know, once a week or once every two weeks and then they have to find other places for them. But generally, they're allowed on residential streets.
Seems to me we had a discussion about parking at a certain, uh, affordable housing apartment complex that got forty percent less parking than it, uh, hmm.
Ready for motion?
Do, yeah, did you still keep that motion?
I don't, it's still in my back pocket.
Let's go.
Hey, uh, I move that we approve resolution two zero one nine dash four two and thereby certify that plot plan P E N one eight dash zero zero six four is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental, Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as a class thirty-two exemption, SEQA guideline, section one five three three two, infill development project, and also approve plot plan P E N one eight dash zero zero six four based on the findings contained in this resolution and subject to the attached conditions of approval included as exhibit A.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Commissioner Baker, Commissioner Stevens, first and second. Cast your vote. Congratulations, approved seven zero. Good luck on your project. Okay, staff wrap-up, please.
This action is appealable and appeal would need to be filed within fifteen days, directed to the Community Development Director in writing with the appropriate fee. Any appeal would be agendaized for City Council's consideration.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is, uh, staff comments. Do we have any staff comments?
I have none.
Commissioner comments?
I have one.
Oh, I just, I just had a question. Um, in January, the state is going to require new housing to have solar panels. Does that affect things that are in process right now or just new things that are going to be designed? And does it include this, these type of projects or is it primarily just like a single-family residence? Are you guys aware of that? I, I'm just curious. I don't, I'm curious how it affects some of the projects that we've start, that have been started or is it all for things that haven't been planned yet?
It's for, uh, applications that come in after the first.
If they're in the development chain already, they're, it, they're not part of that.
Okay, so anything new, nothing that has been started, okay?
That's correct.
Thank you.
You notice that there's, uh, resurfacing of the paving in, uh, in my area. So, you'll quit hearing me complain. So, uh, I'm happy. That's good.
You've got potholes, right?
Yeah, well, I, I must send a bill for all the alignments I've had to have done. I'm like, I'm just joking. Anyhow, um, and did we ever, I think I, I keep asking this, but what, did, do we know what's going on with the renovation of the Moreno Valley Ranch Golf Course? Is that, is there any updates to that or?
No.
It's unknown.
Uh, it's, it's still in progress. Uh, there's been, uh, there's, we're working out some fine details on a couple of aspects of, of the, of the, some cha, possible changes to, minor changes to the plan where some amenities are going to be located or, uh, the clubhouse shape and direction. But, um, it's still moving forward and going through the development process and the, and plan check review.
Good. All right. The other?
I have one. The word fencing was mentioned tonight. Are property owners obligated to fence their property when they're not in use? Because that can avoid a lot of the homeless from planting their tents and everything on these properties.
Only if they have a swimming pool. There's no requirement that you have fencing around your property unless you have a swimming pool.
Interesting. Thank you.
I do have one, one other question. So, I, I live out at the East End and, and fairly close to the new, that Prologis development that was, uh, approved. And I, I think there's like a Solaris paper or, or something in there. And one of my neighbors came up to me and they, uh, there's, they hear like a humming sound, like a humming sound from the building, like anyhow. And then driving by, uh, driving by on the freeway, it looks like there's big, uh, like a dust collection system or something that's outside the buildings. So, thing I, what, I told my neighbor, I said, I think that's a, we just approved, the planning department just looks at the, the building, the land use, box fits all the, you know, whatever, fits setback, so forth, so on. And the land use, and if it gets approved, it gets approved. And, but once it goes to, once it goes into a, lots of planning goes into building, the building department is the one that looks at the noise levels and amenities that they're going to have on the building. Is that correct? Is that where that all happens?
We do have noise standards in the zoning ordinance. So, normally when an application's coming through, we're looking at all the different components of it. It's possible that something is occurring that wasn't anticipated, so.
Yeah, I, I, I just was curious. But it goes to the, is it, is it a building? I just, from a, from, to direct my neighbor, is it something that they just could talk to the, the building department?
If it's after, uh, during operation, they should refer their, uh, issues to code enforcement at this point.
All right, thank you. All right, any other questions, comments, staff? All right, then, at this time, the planning commission meeting is adjourned at eight forty and to our next regular meeting on December twelfth as, uh, as our meeting schedule for November twenty-eighth will be canceled due to Thanksgiving holiday. So, everybody have a good night.